All right, as Chair of Plymouth School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public pod is authorized to meet electronically. For the June 10th School Board meeting, we're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. You can find the Zoom information on the SAU website, www.sau48.org. It is also posted on the door of this school. If you're not able to access this meeting, please contact tOrlando@tOrlando@PevyVayner.org. If the public cannot access this meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Minutes of April 3rd, 2021. May 3rd. What did I say? April? May. May 3rd.
Can I make a motion? We accept the minute?
Aye.
All in favor of that? Aye. Abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Privilege of the floor, number one. Anyone on Zoom? All right, intense. Moving on. Principal's report.
Our hello. Our attendance is exactly the same as it has been for the last two, or our enrollment as it has been for the last two months, which is 409 individuals. We are receiving phone calls and emails from new families and families returning from homeschool status. And I'd like to get the word out to everyone to please call and register. Let us know you're coming back, or let us know that you intend to have a student here in first grade or kindergarten, sooner than later, for our planning purposes. Want to let everyone know that we are moving our registration and beginning-of-the-year paperwork to a digital platform, through Power School. It's called Enrollment Express. So rather than the big packages of papers that are going home, we're going to do it all digitally, and it will pull your current data, so you won't be re-entering data, which we're extremely excited about in the front office. Last month, we had a presentation from a group of students around the dress code. And I have in front of you a document that we have edited a little bit. And I want to draw your attention because Mrs. Carey and I are, would like to edit the document that came last month a little bit. You'll notice the strike through in the second paragraph that says, "We will not send students home for violation of the dress code." In certain circumstances, that might be necessary, so I would like to strike that sentence from the proposal. And I would like to add, in the last sentence of that paragraph, "We will provide students with T-shirts and sweatpants if possible, but not as needed," because sometimes students don't want us to provide them something, right? Sometimes they have something themselves, so just if possible. And then I would like to draw your attention to the third bullet down. We also added, "Shorts with a three-inch inseam are permitted." And I would like to have that be both sports shorts or jean shorts, any kinds of shorts with a three-inch inseam. So I would request that the Board review that proposal and consider passing that tonight. Do you have anything to add about that?
Well, just a point of reference, the high school did modify their dress code to allow, more specifically, sports shorts, three to three-and-a-half inches for everyone. Instead of, the shift is from the length of the leg to the inseam of the short. So that's something.
There's discrepancy on how long someone's arms can be to, and that can be too extremely long shorts as well. I was one of those long-eyed kids.
So I'm going to keep going with...
Are we concerned about potential controversy between the second bullet and the third bullet? It seems like the third bullet would be the priority, that the rule of thumb would be the second bullet? Because there is still language about, the rule of thumb was that with your arms resting on your side, the length of shorts, skirts or dresses should come with them.
So the issue with the three-inch inseam is that it does not reflect skirts. So...
So that still ties to skirts and dresses?
I couldn't find language that I felt comfortable with for skirts and dresses better than the fingertip. I think it's a lot better than measuring with a ruler someone's leg, though, which I personally find...
I would not want to do that.
Um...
Challenging.
Challenging. That's the kindest way to say that.
I would say a three-inch inseam is also going to be challenging to measure, but I hope you can do that by eye from far away.
Well, and my point is that you can do that at home, too. That's something that a mom or a dad can support a student to do at home, which I think is much clearer, and thus, when we're calling home, it's much easier conversation with an adult.
And just to clarify, it's three inches all the way around?
Oh, yes.
I'm just saying because...
An inseam is only in one place.
So there's open shorts sometimes and closed shorts. So...
You're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
Oh. So would that be from hip lines down on the outside?
Coverage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should we say three-inch inseam all the way around?
Well, inseam is generally...
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah. So three inches at the inseam and all the way around?
Closed sides.
Closed sides. I'll just write closed sides.
Closed sides.
Even hemmed. Even hemmed!
Wow. Good job.
Tanya, does the dress hand rule work for shorts?
Excuse me?
Does the dress hand rule work for shorts?
No.
Too short?
I support the proposed change, and I think that that's a reasonable option for shorts. How about squirts? Is the liner going to be the defining... I mean, if someone has a squirt, the shorts become, as long as the shorts have a three-inch inseam, can the skirt be shorter?
The shorts under me?
Yes. Usually, it's the opposite. Yes, but it's, yes.
There's potential.
There's potential. A question as we're sitting here, I mean, this is, I, now that I'm thinking about this, I would like to say no spandex shorts.
What if they're under a squirt?
Alone. No spandex shorts alone.
No matter what...
And the reason, alone, well...
Are they different from leggings?
Yeah. Booty shorts. I'm trying to get away from...
You're trying to get away from booty shorts.
I'm trying to get away from booty shorts.
No matter what policy you write, there's going to be some challenge.
Yeah, but the shorts now, the spandex ones, like, are more like bike shorts.
Not, 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 I know, but those don't have three-inch inseam, those booty shorts. Sorry.
I just say, my recommendation is stick with what you have.
Okay.
See how it goes. If we need to tweak it, we could tweak it.
And there's always T-shirt and sweatpants if possible.
Yes, yes.
That can be provided.
So do we want to add language somewhere in there that sort of gives you a little bit of flexibility? I mean, we reserve the right in... Ultimately, the school administration should be able to make a decision that they think is appropriate, because we're never allowed appropriate policy.
Well, the one that says students may not wear clothing, that's overly revealing.
So there is a statement on the high school dress code policy that says, "Final determination of appropriate dress will rest with the principal or their designee. Students wearing inappropriate clothing will be asked to change. Students may be sent home to change and are subject to disciplinary action."
There has to be some sort of leeway that gives you the authority to make a decision.
Why don't you just add that same language?
We'll add that exact same language.
I would support adding that language.
Because as the styles change, it's, you know, you never know what's going to be...
So can I ask, would it be possible to strike wide from tank tops with straps maybe permitted? I think it's really hard. I mean, that's another place where there's discretion involved, and as long as there are straps, I mean, a one-inch strap is not going to cover more than a quarter-inch strap, is it?
A quarter-inch strap or a spaghetti strap without it... Yes, but I, it's very revealing.
Okay. Are you concerned about revealing undergarments?
Or no undergarment, and it's a daily discussion in my house.
I can imagine. At the same time...
So we could say three-finger rule, or two-finger rule, which at least is, what does wide mean?
I also want to be, I don't want to make this hard for the administration to enforce, but wide is subjective.
No, I think, I think we could, what about two finger or three finger?
As wide as the student's two fingers?
Yeah, I would suggest a measurement.
An inch? One inch?
An objective measure.
I would be okay with that.
Two inches, one inch?
Two inches is pretty wide for a ten.
No matter what we write, there'll be some challenge.
There's going to be a tweet to this, yeah.
There will, but one inch is, one inch is more forcible than wide.
Thank you.
You will have to make a motion on the changes, because it is policy.
Adding that language at the end.
So we still have to decide on the proposed strike language that you struck out, right? And the...
Addition of the short bullet, as discussed.
And we're changing wide to one inch?
Yeah.
And we're adding the, will the language regarding authority to decide?
That will be added in.
Will that be the end?
Yep. Can you read what it says at the bottom of the high school?
Do you want me to read it, though?
Yeah.
"Final determination of appropriate dress will rest with the principal or their designee. Students wearing inappropriate clothing will be asked to change. Students may be sent home to change and are subject to disciplinary action."
I'm okay with that. I will move this suite of changes discussed.
Does that, does adding that last, the part that you struck out about, "We will not send students home for violation of the dress code," does that conflict with...
Well, we've taken it out at the top.
It says may.
May.
They took, "We will not send them home," but...
Yep. But then we're adding it back in here.
No, it said "will not" at the top.
We may send them home.
And instead, it's saying, "we may," which is...
We may send them.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
And my assumption is that the first option is that you're going to provide them an opportunity to put their own clothes on. If not, you're going to provide them an opportunity to put your provided clothes on, and if they do that...
The next option is that your parent brings you something, and then at that point...
Okay. That seems like a logical progression of appropriate response.
Just for your knowledge, the consequences for violation of the dress code at the high school, for first offense, it's a warning; for second offense, it's administrative detention; third offense, it's a Friday in-school suspension; and for subsequent offenses, it continues to be a Friday in-school suspension.
I don't think we should get into that.
I don't, I am not suggesting that. I think...
I think that's high school and that's then elementary. All right, that's my thing.
So someone want to second, Phil's?
Second.
All right. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Thanks. And thank you to the students that did their work on the dress code.
So a couple other things for my principal's report. Virtual learning is finishing up this week. I wanted to let folks know that we are not going to have virtual learning next year, supported by PES teachers. So that means no remote learning for, it's just going to be in-person learning. Yep.
There may be remote days.
Okay.
But there won't be a separate program where students are not...
So no V-Lax then next year?
You can do V-Lax. V-Lax is still available, but it's not part of what we're doing here.
Okay. If someone wanted to do that, it would be...
Either homeschool or as an elective outside of their school day. The character theme for the month of June is zest, and how, we've been talking about, how is zest a positive character trait, and how can it be a negative character trait? And where do we see it in literature? Under curriculum instruction and assessment, want to let you know that we completed NIWA SAS testing and our Fontis and Pennell assessments in the early grades. We're very pleased with the results. There's no question that in-person learning has been successful. I will report more on that data to all of you in the fall. All parents will be receiving individual assessment reports for both NIWA and SAS. Want to let you know about some plans we have for the summer. We have arranged for a behavioral consultant to come and work with a group of teachers. Her name is Polly Bath. She's coming in August to work with about 20 teachers, developing skills for behavior management in the classroom and behavioral support, and trying to help us create common language and understandings around social-emotional competencies. In addition, Brian Sheehan is working on a new program that we'll be using called the DESA Program, which is a universal screening for social-emotional competencies. So we will be focusing, as a faculty, around building skills and understanding deficits in that area next year. Like to do a couple of student shout-outs. Milo Page in kindergarten is a kind, caring young man and follows expectations. He is an outstanding student, so if you see Milo, give him a shout-out. In the middle school, we have all seventh graders showed growth in math. So we're really pleased with our seventh grade in particular. And we'd like to do a shout-out specifically to Brendan Murray and Isaac Ahern for being helpful, enthusiastic, and positive community members in the sixth grade. Want to thank the PTA in advance for their support of, for the field day next week. And I want to let you know under technology that all of our special ed teachers receive new laptops today through a special ed grant, so they have updated the technology that they're using, which is really nice for IEP rating and all of the data that they need to manage and forms. We are scheduling collection of all of our student handbooks. John Ramsey's doing that. And so we, you know, we're keeping track of our technology is the point I want to make.
Chromebooks?
Chromebooks.
Thank you.
Chromebooks, wrong word. And I want to thank you, John, for your help with SAS and NIWA. He really managed that and all of that testing, so thank you. We, under facilities, are rolling through some room changes, so people are moving around in the building based on our homerooms switching around. So I want to thank you to the facilities crew for helping us with that, and thank you to the teachers who are moving. I know it's hard to move classrooms. It's never easy, so would really like to thank them. In recent current events, we had Kindergarten Connections. Twenty-five new kindergarteners participated in Kindergarten Connections, and we have 30 kindergarteners enrolled as of today. We had a wonderful gathering of gratitude, a shared outdoor event with families and faculty, just to honor the hard work of the year. And I want to thank the parents for coming, but I also want to thank the teachers for, you know, for hosting that event and speaking to the year. We've had lots of field trips. I will not read out about every field trip this month.
I appreciate that.
I was going to tease you even more, but I won't. Also, earlier this week, we celebrated the Gontar's greenhouse opening, and Amy and I were there to thank Jen Weatherby and Sarah Sanborn for the hard work that they did to get that going. But the event was really to thank the donors who had donated money and time and energy, and Mr. Francis for all of the work he did to make that beautiful greenhouse become a reality. And if we have time tonight, I would like to take you through it, because the kids had an amazing growing season. There was all kinds of basil and zinnias, and it was really a lovely night with lemonade earlier this week. So thank you to everyone who donated to make the greenhouse happen. We also this week had a sprinkler day, so we had all, we have, our Parks and Rec crew helped to get our field sprinklers set up, and we had all of the kids run through the sprinklers. So we're making sure that we still have fun happen, even though we're wrapping up our COVID year. Upcoming events, this Monday night, we have eighth grade graduation at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, the 15th, we're having a pizza party and water celebration for the winners of some read-aloud contests we had and for the water challenge we had. And then on the 16th, we have K-2 Field Day. On the 16th, we also have the intermediate spelling bee and care awards. And on the 17th, it is the last day of school at Plymouth Elementary School. Dismissal is at 12 noon, so please remember to pick up your children. And then this summer, we have both summer school and ESY happening. So really exciting things to come next week. And then Kyle, I think you have some COVID-19 things.
And Kelly has safety in athletics.
Want to go first?
Do you want me to go first? I'm going to go under discussion items.
Okay.
Okay, sure. So I will note that on my piece of paper here, in bold, the first line under athletics is, "We made it." And so 17 teams were able to interact with their peers, run, play, complete their seasons throughout this entire school year. So I think sometimes we take it for granted, but certainly not this year. So much thanks and praise to our athletes, coaches, bus drivers, DC Sports Photography, our parents, and our school board helping make it happen. It was really a safe and successful year, so we're pretty psyched that we made it through. We're looking forward to the fall seasons and perhaps a closer return to normal. We anticipate any further potential COVID protocol updates and changes. They'll be determined over the summer, but we're hoping that we won't need to worry about that so much. Fall signups were held the first week of June, and permission forms are already coming in. Our preseason dates and times are already posted on the websites, and schedules are being fine-tuned, so those should be posted soon. And also, we have Plymouth Pediatrics will be offering sports physicals here at PES on Wednesday, September 8th, from 8:30 to 11:00 for those who need it right in the nurse's office. In terms of safety, our PES Safety Committee is in the process of the annual review of our PES Emergency Management Plan. We have a few suggestions that came our way from Homeland Security to consider. None are major changes or new updates at this time. We also look forward to the arrival of the new InformaCast app and getting everybody up to speed on that and how that app will be functioning. And also, I want to thank all of the PES Safety Committee members, Plymouth Police and Fire Departments, Durham School Services Bus Company, faculty, staff, and all of our students for helping us to coordinate and run a total of 11 successful safety drills throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any correspondence?
For non-public, I have that piece.
Okay, perfect. All right, COVID update.
All right, so I've got a few different updates here. Just in general, our data, we have, is there wood around here? Zero cases in our SAU right now, and very low transmission in all of our communities, so that is good. There's been a number, can you pass that to the audience?
You ready?
To the audience. A number of updates from the Department of Health and the Department of Ed as well, so I wanted to go through that piece with you. One of the requirements for next year is to update continuity of services. So what, you have, one of your handouts in front of you is our draft proposal to you. Campton and Holderness already voted on it. But as you know, this is a very broad brush, very different than our reopening guidelines, because things come so quickly that we want to update the plan and implement it immediately if there are changes from any of those areas. There's a couple things I would like to ask the Board to consider immediately. One is that we not recommend masks outside until the end of the year, so it's one more week. The other piece, so you're going to, you can discuss all three areas in a minute. The other piece is, I would like to ask that the Board consider making masks optional moving forward after the last day of school, so into the summer and into next year for all students and staff in all settings. So that's something that has come through, you know, we, when we did our reopening plan, we looked at several different considerations of moving between levels. And there was like red level, I don't even remember all the color.
Yellow.
Yellow level, and we basically stayed in an alert level the whole year. But right now, we're really in that green zone where we said vaccinations would be present for most of the community. There's low transmission levels, and all the data points that we have are there. The Department of Ed and Department of Health and Human Services did come out with a joint statement today recommending flexibility in indoor mask-wearing and outdoor mask-wearing for children and staff as well. So since we have a long break over the summer, you know, we have folks in here for summer work. We have kids in for summer school. I spoke with Parks and Rec. They're probably going to follow suit with what we do at the school level as well, so thoughts?
Clarify, till the end of the year?
So for the next week, if so, allow kids to have no mask outside.
Okay.
If they so choose.
Are there going to be situations where kids are in close proximity for more than 10 minutes?
There could be, yes.
But community transmission is low, and it's unlikely that anybody's bringing anything to school at this point?
Headline of NPR, New Hampshire's Pandemic State of Emergency Day on Friday at midnight, just FYI.
I did not know that. It comes in, I'm telling you, it comes in so fast. That's why this says, "Click on the link to get on the latest update." So we've stayed with DHHS most of the time. I don't always put CDC on there, too, because there's, if I put too many agencies, they conflict with one another. So I tend to stay focused on our towns and SAU 48 and the data we have here to make the decisions in conjunction with Department of Health.
So masks on for everybody inside, masks optional outside?
Yeah, so still, and then as of the last day of school, masks optional moving forward in all settings. We have, we spoke to the union as well. Yeah, we are, yeah, so we have, we have discussed this right through, and they're on board with us as well. So I don't know, Nancy, do you want to add anything? No?
I was only wondering if there are any students who would be 10 days past second vaccination by the end of the school year, but there probably are none.
Well, no, there probably are some people who were able to access it earlier. I will say, even outside with the physical distancing, where it has been allowed to have your mask down, there are kids who just wear them. They're just, that's where they're more comfortable. I'm incredibly...
My thinking was, should we go further and allow students who are, you know, past their waiting period after their second vaccination?
So here's something to know. We also got notice, we are not allowed to ask any status of vaccine on children, on anyone. So that came out from the Department of Ed, so that's why the, you get into, if you're vaccinated, all these different areas, are we measuring six feet? Are we measuring three feet? That's why my language is pretty general, because you can't be specific to vaccination status.
So I move that we accept that proposal.
For the red, okay.
Second.
Second?
Third.
Aye.
Yeah, mine, aye.
So Jenny, I would ask that the language be very specific, just because that is something that is a big change for the community. So for the remainder of the year, masks are optional outside for the school year after the school year ends. So June 18th, masks are optional in all settings for everyone. But we're keeping this distance part of it in there? So we're, so the distancing piece is still, we just keep up to date with it. So in the classrooms, the kids are still six feet. The summer, you know, there's still cute kids that there'll mostly be dis- cute kids, that there'll mostly be distancing, and if there's medical requirements for students on I E Ps, then it will be written into the I E P of, if there's any P P E that needs to be used, just as if pre-pandemic would happen. So, any precautions that need to be taken from both students and staff would still be taken.
And Kyle, obviously, this is going to be a fluid document, just like it was, so that if something were to happen, wouldn't you be able to tweak it?
So, if there's any updates, this is allowing, um, me to, to implement them in conjunction with, you know, talking with the union prior to a board meeting. So, if something changes, whether, say, okay, distancing, say, doesn't matter anymore, okay, well then let's, I can do it prior to that, just based on, um, our information, our local area, as well as Department of Health.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Be nice to get back to some sort of policy.
I think, and then the only other piece which Tanya mentioned was that we would not be off, offering a separate remote program, but if contact tracing is still happening, which D H H S does require us to do, um, we will still obviously provide programming to students that are enrolled in school in a remote way, so, in a creative way, so.
Is there a timeline on, sorry?
What's that?
On contact tracing, how long they're going to, D H H S is going to require schools to do that?
I don't know, I'm hoping to see something on that, but, but, um, there could be, while we're in this meeting.
Yeah, it could be. Check M W R again.
So, it'll be interesting, just on the Zoom meeting piece, if there's no state of emergency, that's null and void, but you could still, a lot of boards have just, you're meeting in person, you can always have a Zoom option if you decide to consider moving forward having that, that piece, so.
I would like to make a motion that we continue to allow Zoom access to our meetings.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I would support that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
As long as there, as our technology can support it.
Is?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to make a motion, or just it's consensus to use?
That was a motion, but.
Okay.
If it's consensus, I don't know if we should.
It's important to get it made, well.
One of the new practices, we just continue to keep. Any questions on the document itself? So, you approve those two mask pieces, I would just ask that you approve the, um, continuity of service plans as well through a motion.
Did you not say there were three things?
I could have said that. I had the mask to the end of the year, the mask moving on after the end of the year, and then I had the no remote, and I added some other things in there beyond, okay. Just typical of what happens.
Two-ish.
Did you? I did, yes.
Mike moved the.
My motion, we needed second.
School guidelines, continuity of services.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Mike move.
Did we miss anything on your agenda?
No, the other piece is, we did host, um, the vaccine clinics for twelve and up. I don't know if we've had a meeting since that time, um. But we had, uh, uh, good participation in that piece and, and.
Second vaccination is tomorrow.
Yeah.
I would like to thank the scheduling, I think Candace was handling the scheduling, but she was, um, I appreciate her willingness to allow some of our students who would have been going tomorrow to move to other districts earlier.
Yeah, we've done that across the S A U, whatever works for anybody.
This weekend, and we didn't want to mess around with, um, having some students be the day after vaccination, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Candace.
Absolutely, we'll tell her, great. That's all I have on COVID, unless any of you, anybody else has questions for me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, budget review.
All right, so we did a lot of this last month, and I think we were wait, we have full board here tonight, so to make some decisions.
I was reading the minutes.
There's two documents, or there's a document I gave you on the summer project, so first, I'm just going to have Doc, uh, John review or update some of the projects, is there anything new on there?
Just the trees.
Just the trees.
I should say limbing, not tree cutting.
Tree limbing.
Along the lower playing fields, both field hockey and soccer, along the fence lines, we've got some large overhanging branches, it's just time to trim things back.
And John, these are all coming from a grant, correct?
No. So, this, this is part of unreserved, your, what you have left over at the end of the year, that fits in with your capital improvement project. So, you have the, the branch trim, the carpets, um, library bookcases, the office casework, uh, you have a few pieces of equipment to replace in the cafeteria, two-door fridge, four-burner ranging griddle, a warmer reiki interior locks, um, and then some of the windows that need to be replaced. So, you have a total of one hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred that you could, um, address some of your C I P projects early, um, and you do have the funds to, to do that, so if you'd like to.
I can only see eight, I can only see half of them. Oh, no, it's ten, there's sixteen up there.
One more than others. Because the ones that are leaking, the area that's gone in.
And I think you wanted to make a decision as a group to that, we presented it last month with the, um, without the, the tree limbing, so the tree limbing is added.
Yeah, what do we have, once we do this, if we approve this, what's our leftover that we can, what's our leftover?
So, with all due respect, I think that we should have this part of the conversation before you have that part of the conversation, just be aware that that number's out there, but I think it'd be important to understand where we are for a total financial picture. So, I'm going to hand out some sheets, pass it on, excuse me. And, uh, what I'd like to do is start the, we'll call the thirty-thousand-foot view, and walking through just a couple of points to get to the number we're at, at this point, before any further action is taken, and however deep you want to dive into these numbers, I'm more than happy to do it. So, in assessing year-end, we're always thinking, you know, when a budget's built, you've got two pieces, you have expenses and you have revenues, and theoretically, they balance out. At this point in the year, we can comfortably say that on the expense side, we're about four hundred thousand dollars underspent for the approved budget. And the bulk of that comes from two specific areas. Uh, special ed costs, which comprise of tuition for out-of-district, or classroom aides, or transportation, special ed costs are down three hu, are three hundred thousand dollars under budget. And your health insurance, the district has almost all employees, if not all employees, on a deductible plan, and the, but the district funds the deductible costs should they be incurred. So, when the deductible's not fully utilized, the district has money left over in its health insurance line items, and that number right now is at ninety-five thousand dollars. So, there's your four hun, there's, there's a lot, there's thousands of other lines that add up, but really, if you look at special ed costs, health insurance, you get the four hundred thousand dollars that the district has underspent right now. The other big piece we have this year is revenue is substantially over budget, um, and that's a good thing, in my opinion. The, uh, two biggest areas there are, are from tuition and, uh, special education, students tuitioning, whether they be regular education or special education, those two numbers together are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You also have about forty-five thousand dollars in a premium return from prior year's health insurance premiums that the health insurance carrier declared a surplus in their capital reserves. And in addition, that was about, as I say, about forty-five thousand dollars, and Kim and her assistant Jill, who unfortunately has recently left us, but the, the special ed team has done a great job enhancing our ability to reclaim costs from Medicaid, so there's about a fifty-five thousand dollar bump in Medicaid revenue. So, really looking at about four hundred thousand dollars in underspent budget items, about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in increased revenue. So, once we reduce for the, the, uh, capital reserve fifty thousand dollar warrant article that was approved, we're looking currently at about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars fund balance at this point in time, prior to your decisions about addressing capital improvement programs or retaining any fund balance for future use, as was authorized by your voters this March.
Remind, was there like a number that we were authorized to retain?
Yes, so you're authorized to retain up to five percent, it's a, it's a flexible number, you, it's your decision, up to five percent of your local assessment, and the last number on the bottom left side of the page that I gave you has the number two hundred and seventy-one thousand, that would be your, that would be your capacity or the maximum amount you could retain this year.
Okay, thank you.
That is prior to?
Prior to anything else. So, to be clear, you make any decisions on additional expenses, those, that tonight, those come off the top. I'll just work through the, the basic mathematical model, if you were to approve the, everything on that list of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, you'd still have four hundred and ninety leftover. Take out, if you were to, if you were to decide after that to retain, I would, if you were to retain fund balance, you could, you could have a motion such as retain the maximum amount allowed.
Which is what?
Which would be the two seventy-one number, unless our fund balance for some crazy reason fell below that. And then, if so, you take, you had four ninety, save the two seventy, and then two twenty would be returned to the town as a, as a revenue in next year to reduce the tax burden in the fall.
And much of that return would be your unanticipated revenue anyways, so your additional tuition, special, all that came in in addition to.
So, you'd be taking, you'd really just be spending the, the expenses you didn't spend and the additional revenue returning that to the town.
So, that would not cause a yo-yo effect at all, if you did this?
It has, well, so here's the benefit of having, it, it does have, has an effect, for sure, but one of the benefits of the tool that the voters gave you with the ability to retain fund balance is that when you're built, you're going to have that, that number will be included in the calculations we start working on the following year's budget this fall. And always, when we get that revenue sheet for the following year, that top-tier revenue of fund balance is zero, because we don't know how the year's going to wind out, but you could, during those discussions this fall, vote to commit a portion of the fund balance you retained tonight to the following fall's revenue and have a smoothing effect of your budgetary fluctuations on the tax rate.
I'm in favor of that.
And, and the fund balance retention is capital and capital fund?
No, that's just, that, that is for your use for unanticipated expenses, to commit to reducing taxes, whatever. There, there used to be some very specifically prescribed, allowed uses, they no longer exist, they were removed, and the only method, the only hurdle you have to cross to spend any of that two seventy-one, whether it be for an expense or to commit it to the following year, would be to have a hearing, which you could do just prior to a board meeting, you don't need an additional.
Which we've talked about before, with that, with, that was the new Warren Arco, then you have the other Warren Arco around, see, the capital improvement to put the fifty, fifty thousand slots separate.
Sorry. We've already taken the fif, the maximum for the capitals, yeah, but this is the.
So, they presented this, something like this last board meeting, but we didn't want to do it without you guys being here too.
Yeah.
I can now understand why you wanted to hold off on the decision.
My concern is when, I don't know the complexities of it and couldn't explain what you just said to anybody, but I would trust that, my concern is when it goes up and down and, you know, then you don't have the budget, then all of a sudden, it looks like we're, you know, asking for more money from the town in taxes, and it, I just don't like the yo-yo effect, um, I like, you know.
And that's understandable, I think that one, there, obviously, there's hundreds and hundreds of factors that go into these bottom-line numbers, I think we're dealing with extraordinary times, you know, one of the reasons, for example, that the budget is underspent is you have this, uh, well, term COVID money that came in this year, about a hundred and fifty thousand in grant money that wasn't planned for from federal programs, so we're able to shift expenses into that, into those grants, which reduces the burden on the, on the, on the general fund budget. And so, both the second half of last year and the entirety of this school year, we're dealing with that kind of stuff, where now we're entering into a world where we know in advance that this federal COVID-related money is coming. John can prepare in advance and present a set of projects that aren't necessarily in the budget, so it doesn't create that seesaw effect in the budget, still, can still utilize the funds, still take care of some long-term, uh, needs of the building and the grounds, um, but not have an impact this fluctuation on the tax rate.
What are your guys' thoughts?
I don't want to put John on the spot, because I'm sure he went through these expenses last time I wasn't here.
I'm more than happy to.
I think it's, I mean, I think it's a major decision, so I don't think it's a bad thing to ask any questions you want to ask about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess since Mike, both, I was missing and Frank was missing, would you mind just kind of running through the proposed, um, capital projects that you've got?
The kind of the order of, of which ones you choose, if you stay with the top or where you're at the bottom.
Okay.
But anyway, so the, the one that got added that wasn't on here last time was the, the tree and branch trimming of our lower playing fields. Carpet, starting the office areas, they're a one-twelve plus years old now, and they get in scraggly, so I'd like to replace those. Music, music is always a tough, tough one for carpet because of instruments and use that it gets, so that's up. Library bookcases, um, you've got some grade series coming in and, um, talking with Tanya she really wants, we want to extend.
Unboxed books.
We want to extend them up so the kids can actually get to these grade series when they're, when they're going to get into them. Office casework is, is again, um, replacing some of the stuff and some things that weren't done in our construction process, and we've got some office movement going on, we'll address that. Cafeteria two-door fridge, that's been giving us more and more trouble, so we're at that edge where it's time. Cafeteria, again, the four, four burner ranging griddle, that came over in Mayflower. I think that was one of the pieces that came over here in nineteen ninety, so. Cafeteria warmer, that's, they're literally turning the thing on and off for the break, and that's just not acceptable, and that's been giving us a lot of problems too. Interior, they, uh, rotary key in the interior doors, that's just an ongoing piece that we've been sitting with over the past three or four years, I'd like to complete it. We didn't change the, the whole key system when we did construction because of the cost of it, so this will finish that up, so that we have our ma, our grand master key, but that we also have the southwest, north wings have their own specific key to those areas, and then there's a master key that'll open any other. Upper mezzanine windows, those are the ones that are beginning to leak, or are leaking, so you'll see, sometimes you'll see condensation in them, um, so those are the ones that we want to replace. Yeah, actually, you can see the remnants of that one.
Yeah.
It's stained, it's actually between the glass for condensation. So, ones like that, yep.
And ten is enough to replace the ones that the seals have killed?
Yeah, that's what I've got, the ten in, I've got ten on them.
Do you mind if I ask another question about facilities? There's, at least one parent has brought up the, um, slope failure issue on the northeast corner of the soccer field. Is there a plan to address that long-term? Do we know, is, is the, is the root of the problem on P E S property, or is it on the high school property?
It would be, it would be on the high school property now.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we, we monitor it all the time. Several years back, it was very serious. We have dumped a tremendous amount of, of filled rocks.
Just to, just to keep the grade.
And keep the grade, and just keep, keep this, keep it slowing down, because it's all sand, so when it goes, it just, it went. The majority, I think it was one of the hurricanes that blew it.
So, was there a major failure previously, and what's there now is recently filled and settled?
Yes.
Okay, that, that.
At this, so far, it really hasn't been expanding any wider or, or dropping much lower, so again, it's.
And would you say that the majority of that is caused by the storm or runoff from other drainage structures on the property? And is there?
Yeah, most of it, we, we rebuilt all those, those structures, so that really minimizing the water that gets that out, so you'll see a bunch of retaining areas as you work your way back there, and a lot of that has, has caused, and the rest of the end of mine is just way down below, there's a lot of water that travels from the top all the way through, literally follows the ledge line, and it's, when that sand broke loose, that was path of least resistance, so, you know, we've got some underpinning going on down there, but I'm thinking with the rocks and debris and all the stuff that we put in there, has slowed it down to crawl.
So, you've been adding structure as you've been filling, which should help it?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah, we haven't, no, it's just.
No, I, I mean, dumping sand is not a good solution. It looks, it looks like there are tree roots and rocks in there, and I wasn't sure if those had fallen in or kind of added as structure.
We added a lot of that in there, we keep putting stuff in there.
And, and is the, is the town, or the school's consulting engineer kind of weighing? And is the, is the, or the school's consulting engineer kind of weigh in on that?
No, I haven't had any engineers in any way, we know where it's coming from, it, you know, it's a natural occurrence in one sense too, if you walk that.
It's a steep slope.
If you walk that line, you'll see other areas that were just like that, that now, you know, they're wide, wide ravines, and you'll see, you know, massive trees growing there now, so I mean, in years past, it's done this. It's just inherent, it's, it's a sandy, sandy soil, and it runs all the way down to the riverbed, so.
Well, thank you, I'm glad, I'm glad we're on top of it at least.
Yes, no, she's holding, so that's good.
Okay. Back to the question.
Seems like a good year to do it.
Yeah, so the first motion, I would, I would move that we retain the maximum allowed fund balance.
Yep, I would second that.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Retaining the maximum fund balance? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I would move that we go ahead with the capital projects as presented.
Same. In the amount of 126,500.
Perfect.
I agree.
All those in favor of completing the capital projects, in the amount of 126,500?
Aye.
Aye.
Just quickly, Jenny, if you can put the list of projects right under that, so the public knows what's being done.
Do we need a motion to return money to the town, or does that go automatically?
No, it's just, that's just an automatic calculation, and we do still have two and a half weeks of June, plus bills come in during July, so the point being is that the rest will just settle out, and we'll report out to you in August where we are for net number, for, for the final number.
Is there maybe any, any bills that come in where on the margin will be paid as, in this year?
If they're, if services were incurred prior to June 30th, and our auditor gets quite specific, actually, so if the electric bill straddles the line, we break it out.
Oh, you're fortunate.
The, the, if there's, if summer school starts the last week of June, where the pay weight, pay rate, pay date is two weeks later, we split payroll between before June 30th and after June 30th, so pretty precise, and that's one of the reasons we have clean audits consistently.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
It's nice to be able to get some of these projects done without making a.
Do they have to be specific prior to June 30?
Just a bit about what? We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Jan, for your work.
Amy does a great job on that side.
Appreciate it.
Great.
Thanks, John. All right, is there any other business that we need to discuss?
Is that good on the phone, if you need anything else on that?
Okay, and privilege of the floor number two. Hi, Jenny.
Uh, so I have two things, first, nobody has masks on except for in the meeting, and I was just wondering why, because when you walk in, it still has a big ol' sign that says masks are required on campus, and I know that I got here late, so there wasn't an announcement at the beginning saying that it's not required, even, I'm sure.
We actually did discuss that.
We're six feet apart.
And we're six feet apart.
Okay.
It's been in the whole time.
We did, we did discuss it, because I asked, because I came in with my mask on and it was discussed.
Um, okay, so I just wanted to make sure, just because.
That's been the whole year, all year, kids are at their desks, they can take their masks off, six feet apart.
Okay, 'cause all year, I mean, most people have worn them.
Sure.
I just wanted to double check.
Yep.
So, um, the second question I have is dealing with the dress code, which I know has been finalized, but is a student dress code, and as other issues have come up, it was brought to my attention that that is just a student dress code, and I was wondering what the dealings were for the faculty dress code at the elementary school, because I feel that there is a responsibility to the students, that if they are going to be held to a certain standard, that the, the faculty and staff of the elementary school should also be held to a standard, and that that standard should be reviewable by parents. So I was just wondering what the status of that is, if that's something that like, I'm assuming would have to like go through union or all of that kind of stuff that I don't understand, so I was just wondering what the status of that is, and if that's something that is not in existence, if it could become in existence.
Do you have a faculty handbook, do you?
We don't have a, there is not a written faculty dress code policy.
No, that would be something the board would have to decide if they wanted a faculty handbook or something like that.
I would think that that might be part of the agreement with the union as well.
Yes, absolutely.
So I, I will, I will, that's a great point, I think that the question generally comes up with student attire, and within the, within the dress code that we did approve tonight, there is language that says, our response, our response to students who violate the dress code is to talk to them about the proper attire for school, similar to work attire, so there is a recognition there that work attire should be appropriate as well, and I think the administration probably has the ability to handle that on some level, if, if.
It's spoken about, yes.
I'm curious, are, is there an issue with teachers with inappropriate attire on a regular basis?
On a regular basis? No, no.
There has been an issue at a school this year though, with the staff member, and so I think there is just too.
That's a, that's a good point.
We like to promote fairness and equality, and if there is a student dress code, I think it would be fair and equal that everybody coming into the school has an expectation, a written expectation.
I will say that I certainly spoke to the staff in September, in August around professional attire generally, and in one, you know, if there have been specific issues this year, I have addressed them in, for folks in the building, in a collegial manner.
So there's nothing in like the employee handbook or anything that addresses that?
Would need to be included probably in the CBA.
Think so as well, yeah, and I'd rather not open up negotiations in the CBA to address dress code at this point.
But the next time you're negotiating, maybe it could be.
Well, I think there's an expectation of professionalism when you're a professional, right?
That's true.
But there's not, there's not necessarily, there's not necessarily an expectation of that with an elementary school student, and that might be why there's a need for a written dress code for students and not for teachers. And if there are individual instances of a teacher wearing inappropriate attire, I think it can be taken care of by administration.
Although there's some question about how that was, the enforceability of that in other situations, isn't there?
Well, I, it's, it's a personnel piece, so we deal with it on a personnel matter through an evaluation process around professionalism, and that goes for the way somebody, someone acts to the way they're dressed.
I understand the point you're getting at and the context, and I guess.
And like I said, I don't wanna reference things that are not allowed to be referenced, but I am saying, applying it to our elementary school, I think it is fair to ask that where students are being held to a standard, and it is a written standard, because the same could be said, that it is written down, that you're expected to dress in professional children work attire, you know, that we'll talk to you on a case basis, which is what you're applying to the teachers, but it's fully written, it was worked out with students, with teachers, with staff, and revised, and I think it is fair to say that, especially where there have been instances, or an instance in my specific mind, in the SAU, that it is fair to ask that even if it is not involved in this year's, or however the schedule is with the teachers discussion. That, uh, Department of Engineering, I think it is fair to ask that it get brought up as something that be put on the docket.
So there is, there is a new policy that was just passed SAU-wide around ethics, that I think if you read that, you would see that there's, it was, it's brand new and just passed, that covers a lot of, maybe some of the concerns around that piece in choice of professional, professional choices in general that addresses that, so, and it's, it's now a Plymouth policy as well, so it, and it matches with the Department of Ed.
It's a SAU policy.
It's an SAU policy, so it's every district, we just passed it a few weeks ago, and it addresses many of those pieces that align with the New Hampshire Code of Ethics that we did not have in place prior to the middle of May.
So I will read those.
Yes, yeah.
And if there is more interest in my part.
Well, just check it out, just check it out, I think, I think that will address some of your concern.
And you also did say the teacher evaluation has a piece on professionalism.
Yeah, so professionalism's dealt with, you know, it's all those soft skills, so it's, it's something that the principals work and coach faculty and staff or work with to, to, you know, evaluate professional, the way you speak to others, it, it's everything, all those soft skills, speak to children, how you present yourself, all that stuff is dealt with through the evaluation process as well. And just natural supervision, and if, then if something comes up, we deal with it, we can't share, we don't share the consequence typically, or, you know, it's confidential personnel piece, so that's where sometimes it, it lands. Where all, it always lands, actually.
It should.
It is, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Because I do recall it, you, there used to be something here, because I remember there was a thing, controversy around women wearing shorts versus men allowed to wear shorts, but it was all addressed, I thought, through professionalism or something like that.
Thank you, all right, so a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
Favor going to non-public? Thank you.